Good evening, welcome to the August Board of Education meeting for Lake Mills. Almost September, almost the start of school. We're down in City Hall again, and my name is Rick Mason, I'm president of the board, and our mission statement is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Verification of the meeting notice?
On September, or excuse me, August 2nd, we posted the agenda at the Lake Mills Library, the Lake Mills Post Office, and the Baker Lake Mills, as well as having it posted on the website. We received bids for an action item, for the van, and that item was added to the agenda on the 8th of August, and it was reposted.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please invite everybody to stand and say the pledge of allegiance. Behind me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have roll call, please?
Don Delaney. Rachel Davies.
Here.
Robert DiImperio.
Here.
David Radell.
Here.
Richard Mason.
Here.
Any agenda revisions or approval? We have a change in the agenda?
We'd like to remove item H, the MOU with the Lake Mills Basketball Club. We're not quite finished working on that yet, and we would like to add item J, just came up today, the approval of HVAC control system for the high school technology education wing.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
I move approval of the agenda with the modifications as noted by Ms. Strick.
Second.
Move and second to approve the agenda with the modifications and amendments to it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Okay, board reports. Dr. Delaney is not here tonight, so we'll go right to Mr. DiImperio. Facilities.
Since our last meeting, the facilities committee has had two opportunities to meet. In the first one, we did some research and review on the issues surrounding the use of the basketball gym. That has resulted in a draft memorandum of understanding, which the administration is currently working on. So we expect that by our next meeting, we'll have something definite to discuss. The second opportunity we had was to take a tour of the construction going on at the high school building, looking at both the addition area, as well as the area to be remodeled, and viewing the progress being made on the athletic complex.
Okay, thank you. And I have an update on the reading of the policy. We have a first reading. We met on July 23rd. Dr. Delaney, myself, and Mrs. Strick went through the entire policy, group of policy changes, that is now done by Niola. And most of the changes, if you have a chance to read through those, are minor. They're just rewarding of things, make it a little bit clearer. One example is, in terms of the audit, we used to always approve the audit, and that has legal implications, so instead of approving the audit, we will accept the audit in future years. So basically, that's it. This will be the first reading of the policy as we go through. Any questions on that? All right. Administrative reports. Mrs. Thompson is?
Mrs. Thompson is out of town celebrating her birthday.
Oh, okay, okay. Mrs. Bauer is here, middle school principal.
Good evening. Just a couple of topics on the middle school. I've been spending the last few weeks trying to advertise and get an AP for you, so, an assistant principal, so I've been working, that's probably been the majority of my time in the last couple of weeks. However, we have been also working on registration, which we just started with parents coming in last Tuesday, lots of schedule changes, those kind of things, we've been working on that. And then I've spent quite a few hours also with Playworks, which is the socio-emotional learning that we will be doing on the playground, the grant we got from the Ford Healthcare. So, spending a couple hours with them, working on different things. We will start training on Monday. In terms of district work, I have shifted some of my roles into educator effectiveness, and then the mentor coordinator, so getting the new staff, and my learning plan, our evaluation system, those kind of things, and also designing the first couple of days for the new teachers. And we hope to see you all there at the picnic on the 20th.
Any questions? Thank you. Mrs. Brown, Director of Special Ed and Pupil Services?
Tonight, I'm going to present to you our annual report on our seclusion and restraint numbers, but I wanted to give you just a little bit of, kind of, a few years in glance back, just to look at the numbers. The year before, I became the director, so at the end of '16 and '17, we had 60 seclusion instances and 47 restraint, and that included, there were 12 different students that were involved. The first year I was the director, at the end of '17 and '18, we had 17 seclusion instances and 29 restraint, so almost half of what we had the previous year, and that involved 11 students. And so our numbers this year also continued to decline by over half in each of those areas. This year, we had eight seclusion instances and 12 restraint instances. That included four elementary students and two middle school students. And I just wanted to point out that I think our staff are working really hard, our paras, our teachers, our therapists, our psychs, counselors, everyone's working to develop plans that are catching kids while we're still able to de-escalate them, so able to kind of catch them before we have to go to a different route in order to keep them safe.
Good. Any questions on that? Thank you. Mrs. Brockert, Director of Business Services.
Thank you. As you're aware, June 30th is our year-end for our financial fiscal year, and so we've been busy in our office with all our year-end reporting. We had our auditors here the end of July, and that audit work is pretty well complete. We're just awaiting for their report. We are in the process of submitting some financial reports in special ed and regular total all-fund reporting to the DPI. Some of those have already been submitted. And the other piece is our post-employment benefit study, that is in the process of being completed. So, we're just in the process of just completing lots of year-end reporting for the state and other organizations.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Strick, District Administrator.
Good evening. The first thing that I'm really excited to share with you, and we've been kind of keeping this under wraps for a while, we're waiting for the right time to announce it, but Lake Mills High School has been designated by U.S. World and News Report, U.S. News and World Report, that we've made the list of best high schools in the United States. And so, we're really thrilled with that, and there'll be a press release that we'll share with the paper tonight. And one of the things that I really look at is the number of advanced placement classes, and the scores that people have on the advanced placement classes, and then all of the other test results that we have. So we're really thrilled to finally make that list. Also included in my report, you'll see the new brochure for the recreation department. That continues to grow and flourish, and just get better each and every session, so we included that entire brochure for you to take a look at, and that's available for the public online as well. And then, our social media report is attached as well, and that always gives interesting numbers about what our most interesting hits were on Facebook and Twitter, and all those kinds of things. But more importantly, I'd like to introduce Mr. Dan Hanrahan. He's the director of CISA II. He's with us tonight to talk with you a little bit about CISA II. And we're also very pleased that he is a parent of our own district, and so we're very pleased that out of his 72 school districts, 74 school districts, he chose Lake Mills to live when he took this position.
It's an easy choice.
He's a very wise man.
Yes. Some of my clickers are working, should I sit or stand? Does the mic pick me up all right?
The mic, we have to...
Can you go to the set?
Okay.
I can make that happen.
Okay.
All right. So again, Dan Hanrahan, Agency Administrator for CISA II, also a Lake Mills parent and community member. Rick is on our Board of Control, and as we talk with the different Board of Control members, we thought it'd be nice if I visited some of the school districts of where we share board members, and just kind of give a brief overview of what a CISA is, and a little bit about CISA II. Some people are quite aware of what a CISA is, and others are, I've heard it, but I don't really know what that means. So we thought we'd take this opportunity to kind of share what that is. As Pam had said, we have 74 school districts within our region. We are the largest number of school districts for CISA. The next neighboring closest district would have 40 districts as part of their region. We are the second in enrollment counts, so CISA I, which includes Milwaukee Public Schools, will have the largest people count, we're the number two for people count, but the largest for number of districts that we serve. Sort of just a brief, big-picture view of what a CISA is. So back in 1963, they were first created, and in '65, they had 19 CISA's operating. There are many smaller school districts at the time, before sort of that mass consolidation that happened. At that time, then in 1983, they pared that down to 12, which is our current number. So all of the public school districts in the state of Wisconsin are divided into one of those 12 CISA's, which stands for Cooperative Educational Service Agency. So we are similar to a school district. We are created under statute 116 as part of our formation, and the original purpose behind the cooperative model was to have some sort of unit in between the local school districts and the state superintendent, so we kind of serve sort of that bridge between DPI and the local school district. But we really rely on the cooperative word, and we see ourselves as truly an extension of the school districts, and I'll share about how our governance model is. But we're here to serve our member school districts and service students within our region. That is really our core mission. Working, obviously, as an intermediary between DPI and the local school district is an important role, but I think helping school districts serve our students and create efficiencies is a vital role that we play. So in general, school districts, or CISA's rather, they can serve school districts, private religious independent schools, the UW system, technical colleges, and essentially any agency or organization that provides services to children is what we're all governed by under the state statute 116. So we really serve anybody that has that same nonprofit mission and serves children is someone that we might provide services to and support as part of our work. So, as I had said, the CISA is really an extension of the school district, and the way that it's structured, just like a local school board, you have your local voters that decide who's going to be on your local school board. Our local school board, then, our 74 school districts, will have one representative, they have a delegate that will serve within their cluster. We have 11 clusters. So out of that cluster, they will elect someone from their cluster to serve in our Board of Control. So as I said, Rick is on our Board of Control, he's obviously on your school board, so every one of our Board of Control members is a locally elected school board member. So we're an extension of school districts in that sense. And then, somewhere to a school district, the board hires me, as they would hire the superintendent, and then we provide the services and do all of those things. So it's kind of small print, but you can see the number of districts they cover throughout our region. Our region ranges down from the Westosha area down on the Illinois border. We go all the way over to Monroe, as far as up as Wisconsin Heights and Mount Horeb, and then Watertown, Waterloo, Marshall, and then all the way again south down to the border, so we kind of have a large geographic region that we provide services within. So as I said, our Board of Control's similar to a school board. We're made of 11 board members, three-year staggered terms, they meet monthly, they set the policy for a CISA which governs what we do, they appoint me, and then they approve any contracts, so again, very similar to a school district, just on a different scale. So thinking more specifically about CISA II, some numbers that I always find kind of interesting, and really kind of hits to our heart, is we service 171,000 students within our region. Of those, 155,000 or so are public school students, about 13,000 parochial, and 3,000, should be homeschool students. So 171,000, that's a pretty powerful number to think about, the number of lives that we touch as an organization, and that really drives our mission-based organization. With that, then, we have about 32,000 educators, public school educators, so that's administrators, teachers, and support staff within our region as well. As part of the work that we do, and I'll share a little bit of that, we do quite a bit of specialized services, so OTPT, deaf and hard of hearing, those types of services. We have 535 students that we serve annually in there. We had over 3,000 teachers or educators attend one of our workshops that we offer throughout the year. A lot of people think of CISA II as driver's ed, and that is a portion that we do. We have over 4,000 students across the state that go through our driver's education program. In one of the other slides I'll share, that we also run the Birth to Three program for Rock County, and we had over 10,000 visits to children in Rock County in our Birth to Three program. So we actually not only work with educators, but directly touch the lives of children, and that's kind of exciting for us. Somewhere to a school district, so we have our board, we have myself, and then we have four main platforms that we operate as far as an org chart is concerned. So we have our financial services, our operations, which is all of our internal pieces, HR, technology, all those types of things. We have our integrated programs and services, and those are all the direct services that we provide to schools and to students. And then another internal would be our communication and marketing platform. So our leadership team is a small team, and we try to keep that so we keep all of our overhead costs as low as we possibly can, and then drill down into all the services that we provide. About two years ago, we reconfigured our organization to really focus on, within our programs and services, what are our areas of expertise and strengths, and how do we best support schools based on the needs that we're hearing from school districts? And the main areas that we've identified as our core areas of expertise are certainly around curriculum and coaching. We do quite a bit of work with our Language and Culture Center, we're working with EL students in bilingual. Quite a bit around educational technology and digital learning. The shared staffing services that I had just talked about is typically it is for direct student services, those OTPT, those types of services, but we're also expanding into other areas as districts identify needs. So network administration for IT is something that we'll expand into. There's been needs for some of our really small districts for a business manager, so we're trying to establish a model that we could do shared business manager services and provide that services to school districts. We do quite a bit with looking at data and systems analysis and systems audits, both from an efficiency as well as an instructional impact. That's one of our core centers. We are the only CISA in the state that is doing implementation science, so we are part of a pilot program with DPI to look at the implementation science, so we're connected with the National Research Center on Implementation Science, and really how you roll out implementations of initiatives for the greatest gain in the shortest period of time. And one of the things that we've learned a little bit in that short research time is that a typical implementation before it's fully implemented can take over 20 years. If you use their research, you can have full, fully implemented, aligned to what the implementation is supposed to be within eight years with using the research and the science and those methodologies that go with that. So it's pretty impactful of what can happen when you use the research. And then our Student and Behavior Support Center is the other center that we look at. As you see on our little diagram, we always keep a future service open. The way a CISA is funded is we do not receive any state funding, so all of the work that we do is a fee-for-service work that we do for school districts. We receive some federal and state grants, but those pay for the direct services that we're providing to school districts. So we always want to be in that growth mindset and be highly responsive to the needs of our school districts, so we leave a spot open in our mind all the time of where do we next need to be responsive to meet the needs of our school districts. Some of our main other services beyond that, as I had mentioned, we do the Birth to Three program down in Rock County. We do vocational assistance, which helps disabled adults find employment, do some job coaching and job training for them. Our driver's education program. We have eight Head Start sites that we run, Lake Mills is one of them. We have a professional resource lending library, so some of those expensive curriculum materials or resource materials, we have a lending library model that we work with school districts. Assistive technology, which can often has been a very expensive piece, we actually run that for the state. So those pieces of technology that cost over $5,000, we house, and we ship those out to the different school districts where they have needs for students in very high-need assistive technology areas. And then CISA purchasing. And so, the 12 CISA's in Wisconsin work really well together, and one of the initiatives that we have is a statewide purchasing program, so we run the state's CISA purchasing program, and the contracts that we work with, we negotiate with our vendors that we will have best or better pricing to anyone in the state. And oftentimes, people think when you're a larger district, you may not need that. The reality is that Milwaukee Public Schools, with how big they are, they actually use some of our contracts because they can get better deals through our CISA purchasing contracts than they can on their own. So we work really hard to try to bring that cost down, so whether you're a district of 100 students, or a district of 800,000 students, or I should say 400, I think that's what MPS is, you should receive the same pricing. And so we're trying to level that playing field for all of our districts throughout the state. So that's one that we're actually pretty excited about, as far as trying to find some efficiencies and save some dollars, so you can better allocate what you spend your money on in other areas. So that's sort of the snapshot view of what CISA's are in Wisconsin, gave you a little bit of more view of CISA II. Are there any specific questions that you have, or things that you'd like to know more about?
Any questions at all? You probably aren't aware of all the CISA things that go on, that they do day in and day out, so this is good of our overview. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
I would just add that CISA II is also the fiscal agent for the Jedi Virtual School, that we are the chartering school. So I have spent a tremendous amount of time with Dan this summer, as we've hired a new director, and worked through the issues of working better together.
And we were grateful to hire Jamie.
Now wait for us.
Good, all right. Consent agenda, we have a number of items on consent agenda, and I'm going to read those through to you so you have an idea what they are. Approval of July 5th, Special Board of Education meeting minutes. Approval of July 8th, Regular Board of Education meeting minutes. Approval of July 8th, Finance Committee proceedings. Approval of July 18th, Facilities Committee proceedings. Approval of July 22nd, Special Board of Education meeting minutes. Approval of July 23rd, Policy Committee meeting proceedings. Approval of August 1st, Facilities Committee proceedings. Approval of August 6th, Special Board of Education meeting minutes. Approval of vouchers and invoices. Approval of treasurer's report. Approval of co-curricular letters of assignment. And approval of co-curricular, of a co-curricular letter of resignation. Does anyone on the board want to pull anything out of there to? All right, then I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Move and second to approve the consent agenda. Any questions or comments on those? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert DiImperio.
Aye.
David Radell.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye. Action items. Approval of class of 2023 New Student Organization at Lake Mills High School.
So each time a new student activity account is set up, you need to approve that, so the class of 2023 is ready to walk in the door in a couple weeks, so we need to set up that account.
I'll move the board approve the class of 2023 as a new student organization at the Lake Mills High School.
Second.
Move and second to approve the new student organization in the high school. Any questions on that? Okay, roll call on that, please.
Robert DiImperio.
Aye.
David Radell.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that's approved unanimously. Approval of professional staff contract for the 1920 school year.
So we bring before you the name of Nathan Grundle as the Middle School Assistant Principal and Summer School Director. This is in response to Ms. Seabrood leaving the district and some reorganization that we did on the administrative team. This was a really, a really wonderful process because we had 81 applicants, 79 were fully licensed. We had just outstanding candidates, and because of that, we went through four levels of interviews. So, poor Mr. Grundle was, I think at the last, when I finally called him, he's like, "Is it really over? Did it really happen? Did I really get this?" So he's thrilled to be here, and I believe if you accept his contract this evening, he will start tomorrow.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve an administrative contract for Mr. Nathan Grundle as Middle School Assistant Principal and Summer School Director, and welcome him to the Lake Mills Area School District.
Second.
Move and second to approve the new administrative contract for Mr. Grundle. Questions, comments on that? Jen welcomes the help. Roll call, please.
David Radell.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert DiImperio.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that's approved unanimously. Approval of Middle School Student Handbook for the 1920 school year.
So last month, we had the first reading of the Middle School Handbook, and if you have any questions, Ms. Bauer's here to answer your questions.
I'll move the board approve the 2019-20 Middle School Student Handbook.
Second.
Move and second to approve the Middle School Handbook. Questions, comments on that? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert DiImperio.
Aye.
David Radell.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that's approved unanimously. Approval of the Elementary Student Handbook.
This also was presented last month for its first reading, and if you have any questions, I can help you with that.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the 2019-20 Elementary Student Handbook.
Second.
Move and second to approve the Elementary Student Handbook. Any questions on that? Roll call, please.
Robert DiImperio.
Aye.
David Radell.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that is approved unanimously. Approval of Family and Consumer Science bid.
So the appliances for the new Family and Consumer Science Room are under owner purchase, so it's still referendum dollars, but they're appliances that we're responsible for bidding and purchasing ourselves, so we received two bids, and obviously, we'd like for you to take the lowest bid, that's before you.
Move the board approve the bid for appliances for the new Family and Consumer Science classroom from Kesnick's Madison, Wisconsin, in the amount of $33,775.51. It is understood as that the purchase will be made from referendum funds.
Second.
Move and second to approve the bid from Kessnick's for the appliances for the Family and Consumer Education new classroom. Any questions on that? Roll call, please.
David Radell.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert DiImperio.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of school bus bid for the 2021 school year.
We received a bid from Nelson Bus Service for a 2021 bus, and we received two bids from Midstate for a 2020 stock item and a 2021 bus. We are recommending to go with the bid from Midstate for the 2020 International Bus in the amount of, what's that on here? Sorry, $90,450.
I move the board accept the bid for a 2020 International Integrated CE Bus from Midstate Truck Service in the amount of $90,450 for the 2020-2021 school year.
Second.
Move and second to approve the bid for Midstate Truck. Questions on that? Questions on that?
It's my understanding that the actual purchase will not occur until after July 1st of 2020.
Correct.
Correct. Any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert Tempurio.
Aye.
David Radell.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. The approval of Head Start contract for the 1920 school year.
As you know, we have an outstanding working relationship with Head Start, and we're just thrilled to have our own students stay right here in Lake Mills and have their program right inside the elementary school. And so this contract is just rolled over, we haven't changed any of the terms or the amount, so you saw this last year as well.
I move the board approve the contract between the Lake Mills Area School District and Jefferson County Head Start for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second.
Moving to second to approve the Head Start contract. Any questions on that? Still housed in the elementary school?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Robert Tempurio.
Aye.
David Radell.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of van bid for the 1920 school year.
We received two bids for the purchase of a van for our transitional program, and we are recommending to go with a bid from Badger Ford Truck Center. $28,427, and that's contingent upon receiving approval from the Department of Public Instruction.
I move the board approve the purchasing of a 2019 Transit 150 van from Badger Ford Truck Center in Lake Mills, contingent upon approval of funding by the Department of Public Instruction.
Second. Moving to second to approve the purchasing of a van, contingents upon approval of the DPI with use of specialized funds. Questions on that? Roll call, please.
David Radell.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert Tempurio.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, that passes unanimously. Approval of HVAC control system for the high school, Technology and Education wing.
So we've looked at several different options to update the control system in conjunction with the technology, within the technology education wing in conjunction with the referendum. So I'm just going to read to you what we're recommending to tonight. To relocate the panels to the Woods Lab mezzanine and update the DDC ALC controls, this would include the retrofit of the existing AHU in the Woods Lab and the retrofit of the existing cabinet unit heater for a total of $26,220. And this is from ALC from Madison.
Well, I will move acceptance of the bid from ALC of Madison as Ms. Strick just described.
Second.
Moving to second to approve the HVAC system. 26 to 20, is that correct?
Yes.
Questions, comments on that?
Again, it's my understanding that funding for this will be through the referendum.
Yes.
And that order will be placed immediately.
Immediately, so we can try to have that work done before the start of school.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert Tempurio.
Aye.
David Radell.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of gifts, Mr. Radell.
I move the board accept the following gifts and thank the generous donors for their continued support of the students and programs of the Lake Mills Area School District. Dolores Elliott's donation of golf clubs and bags donated to the high school's Physical Education Department with an estimated value of $100. St. Vincent Paul's donation of school supplies with an estimated value of over $100. Watertown Ager Business Club's donation of $150 to the high school's FFA club. The Tyranny and the Ladies Club donation of $200 to the eighth-grade Washington DC trip in 2020. Wisconsin's Farm Bureau Federation donation of $500 to the high school's FFA club. Frank and Sue Wheatle's donation of $2,000 in memory of Emily Emma Suzanne Wheatle to the high school girls softball team. Nicholas and Mary Ann Zwaska's donation of $2,000 to the elementary school's 21 Fund for Student Mindfulness, and the L cap booster club's donation of $7,550 to the Lake Mills High School Athletic Department.
Second. Any comments on those?
Wow.
Wow, again.
Yeah, exactly, it's wonderful.
Thank you to everyone. Roll call, please, on that.
Robert Tempurio.
Aye.
David Radell.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Future Board Agenda items.
Unfortunately, next month, we will have a resignation of a staff member and then hopefully an approval of a staff position. We will also accept the gift from Playworks that Jen acknowledged tonight from the Watertown Health Foundation, that's in excess of $35,000, and that's for the elementary and the middle school, so we'll make sure to explain all of that to you next month. And then we'll also have to approve the policies, we'll have the second reading, so make sure you take a look at all of those and let us know if you have any questions as well.
Good, anything else? Anybody think of? Okay, a motion to go to executive session.
Hang on. I move we adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85 par. 1 par. C, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Par. I, administrative contracts.
Second. Moving to second to approve the executive session, closed session. Roll call on that, please.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert Tempurio.
Aye.
David Radell.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. We're now in closed session.